This button here.
Yeah. Oh, he's hot now.
I'll call the meeting to order, the planning board.
So, roll call, Mr. Amico.
President.
Mr. Charoloni.
Here.
Mr. Del Vecchio.
Here.
Mr. Dismoni.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Giammello, absent. Miss, uh, Mr. O'Brien. Mrs. Penn, absent. Mrs. Simmons-Hurling.
Present.
Present. Okay.
Thank you.
So, the first order of business is gonna be, um... Frank?
First order of business, a public hearing. This is by Enterprise Rent-a-Car to amend the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere to allow automotive truck rental office and storage used by special permit within the highway business district.
We'll hear the proponents first. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. Attorney Nick Zozula, McDermott, Quintian Miller, um, here on behalf of Enterprise for a requested zoning text amendment. We did come before the planning board back in September of last year. I believe there are some new members. I'm not positive if that's the case or not, Mr. Chair. I can certainly go through the project again and through the, the text amendment that we're looking for, but when we were in front of this board back in September of last year, there were certain, um, recommendations that were made and modifications to what we were seeking with the text amendment to the highway business district to allow an automotive truck rental office and storage by special permit. Right now, in the highway business district, this, um, use is just not allowed. And so, what we're seeking here is the ability to change the text amendment, the zoning to, with this text amendment, to allow this use via special permit. Right? So, right now, it's a, in the simple terms, right now, it's, the zoning ordinance has it as a red light. We're asking to make it a yellow light, meaning we'd have to come back anytime somebody was looking to, um, seek this use in the highway business district, just like it is, uh, I believe in the TED and the PDD one. It would be the same type of scenario where they would have to come back and get approval from the city council. This is not a request in the highway business district to make this an allowed use. It's just a request to make it a special permit. When we were in front of this board, again, it may have been a different form of this board back in September, there were two specific questions or requested modifications. Uh, the first was that in this amendment, the minimum lot size be increased to 25,000 square feet, which we have since done in our, in our request in this new filing, um, and that any vehicles be limited to no more than 8,000 pounds G V W. Before, what we had asked for was 10,500. Um, for comparison's sake, 8,000 pounds is roughly a Ford F-150. Okay? So, not huge trucks, not moving trucks, not U-Haul trucks, just a Ford F-150 would be the max that would be allowed. Um, there are other, uh, um, conditions that we've proposed in our amendment. Again, the 8,000 pound limit, vehicle capacity on any lot would be 50. So, again, minimal, minimum 50 lot, 50 cars, I'm sorry, maximum 50 cars on the lot at any one time. Um, again, I just mentioned the minimum lot size is now over a half acre, whereas before it was a half acre, so you have to have more than a half acre of land and you can only park 50 cars at maximum. No stacking of vehicles allowed on the site. Uh, importantly, no repair, repair, maintenance, or bodywork, so if there were issues with these vehicles, this is strictly, in our amendment, this would strictly be to allow retail only. Again, um, not bodywork, not, you know, hundreds of cars, just a retail site where somebody's staying at one of your hotels, uh, or one of the, you know, who needs a rental car because of bodywork at another place could come and rent a car and, and use it for their own purposes, um, not for moving trucks or things like that. Finally, um, another, uh, uh, requirement that would be in the amendment would be to install and provide substantive screening and buffering on the site. Right? So, to make sure that this isn't an open lot with vehicles that are just looking like it's a, a, a parking lot. I will say finally, for most rental car, um, businesses like Enterprise, if they were to get a special permit in this business district, they don't make money by cars sitting on the lot. It's a rental car. If it's sitting on the lot, nobody's paying for it. So, the point here is not to have 50 cars sitting on the lot. The point is to have cars leaving, renting, and it to be a retail. So, that's what we're proposing. I will just note finally, and then we're happy to answer any questions, uh, Mr. Chair, that this vote did favor, this board did favorably recommend this amendment back in September with those conditions, which we've now included in our text amendment. And I know that was a lot of information, so I'm happy to stop and answer any questions.
Actually, it was, it was a pretty accurate summary. We have one new member of the board, Ms. Hurley.
Yeah, it's nice to meet you.
Play, and, um, so, Ms. Hurley, do you have any questions? So, we, we approved this in September. What we do is we recommend to the council. The council rejected it. The council rejected it. It's now returned to us. There's a new, there's a new council, there's three, three, there's some changes, three changes in the council, so they're gonna take a second bite of the apple. In order for the council to vote on it, we, we need to recommend, since we, we're pretty all, we're all pretty familiar with this project. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. That's the council for Enterprise.
Okay. I did some reading on it. I don't have questions just yet, but I'll let you know.
Thank you. Continue.
I've, I've got a question, Chair, please.
Go ahead.
So, when you say retail, what does that actually include? Is it just the rental of vehicles, or is it the sale of vehicles?
No sale of vehicles. It would just be a rental site. The current site that we, again, this is, what we're asking for is to amend the zoning for the entire, for all these highway, not just for the specific site where we're looking, that's the impetus for why we're doing this, but we're asking to change the zoning for, with these conditions, for the, all the highway business districts, of which there are a handful up and down in the city of Revere. But, the, you know, it's for the, the automotive truck rental office and storage, so there's no, you would not be able to sell vehicles under this amendment. It would be for the rental. Yep. And, again, the last thing I'll say, because you brought this up, was this, this site where we're looking at right now on Squire Road, again, which is in a highway business district, it's a Verizon Wireless retail store. We're not looking to make any changes to the structure. If and, if and when we get the, we have to come back for a special permit, we would go into these details. We wouldn't be changing that. It would be fitting within the building that's there now. It's 85 Squire Road, it's a Verizon Wireless store. There's gonna be some cosmetic changes, but nothing's getting bigger, taller, or, or wider, or anything like that. It would be, it would fit within the, the framework of what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just ask your name again? I just didn't get it down, the pronunciations.
Sure, Frank. It's Nick Zozula. Z O Z U L A. Lot of Z's, it sounds harder to spell than it really is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Having, thank you very much. We'll close this side of the hearing, and we'll open opponents. Please state your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Anthony Zambuto, 87 High Street, Revere, Mass. I was not at the public hearing in September that you had when you voted to, uh, offer this out, uh, favorably. Had I been there, I would have opposed it then. Uh, but I was on the city council in November 22nd, uh, 2021, when the council unanimously voted against us, 11 to 0. Uh, and the reason is that we've had a different vision for Squire Road than what ends up being cars parked there. Uh, it, it, it was never intended to be a rental car agency, and the gentleman elegantly said that this was a yellow light, and you wouldn't be allowing this except to come back with special permit. But I see it as a green light. Once you offer this, uh, to Enterprise, that opens up Sozio. That could be a parking lot the size of Wonderland, what we have now there, and other big parcels on that strip. That's not the vision that I or the city council had, uh, for this site, for this roadway. Its restaurants, there was talk of a potential brew pub going in that very site. Not that that has anything, there's nothing on the table. Uh, I know they, they represent Enterprise here, they don't actually own the property. Uh, there's an owner from New York. I'm not even sure it's legal for them to, uh, ask for this, uh, zoning change without official ownership, but that's another, that's a legal matter that doesn't have much to do with, uh, this board. I would ask that, uh, you reject this proposal, uh, and whether you do or not, um, my hope is that, uh, there are still eight members of the city council, um, serving that served in November of 2021, and, uh, I'm hoping they will reject this, because I don't see it as, uh, good for the city, and, uh, that's certainly not our vision to have cars parked on that stretch of roadway. I, I think most of you are familiar that a lot of, um, a lot of landscaping, et cetera, has been done to that area to make it attractive to, in fact, the, the type of, you know, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. That's what we're looking for there. That's what I was looking for there, and I think a lot of my, uh, former colleagues and, uh, current members of the city council are looking for. And, uh, so that's why I'm here, to go on record as opposed to this proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Would you like to, um, did you? If you wanna speak, it's, it's okay.
Attorney Nick Zozula, McDermott, Quintian Miller, as former councilor, Zambuto just, uh, responded, uh, as a public citizen. What vision? You are the planning board. You plan the vision of the city. There's a Wendy's, a Dunkin' Donuts, an IHOP, a Dollar Tree, a mattress, a car wash. There's a premium rental car company at 100 Squire Road. It's right across the street. Now, I don't know how long that's been there. I would imagine that you folks do, you live in the city, I do not, but how does a 50 rental car with all these conditions and modifications and restrictions, how is that the big bad boogeyman who's coming to the city of Revere to impact and change the vision of Squire Road? I'm sorry, I, I just don't see it. I don't. And, uh, with all due respect to Councilor Zambuto and his service and his understanding of things that have gone on, much more than I have, as somebody who's looking at this with fresh eyes, I just don't see, I don't see the problem with these conditions and restrictions for the text amendment, so thank you.
Thank you. For your ratification, former councillors become councillors again quite often in this city.
Understood, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean that with no due disrespect to Mr. Zambuto.
I understand, but, uh, we've got a couple of councillors that were former councillors on the council now, today, and, uh, we go all the way back to our friend George Clawwell, who was a former councillor and then became a councillor, but thank you.
I, I didn't mean it in a disrespectful way, I meant it as a matter-of-fact way. I apologize. Understood.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna close once Tony gets the response. Any other questions? Everybody fine? Did you? Did you wanna say anything else?
So, sure. So, one, one thing that I will mention, and Counselor Zambuto, Mr. Zambuto can, can vouch for is, we did have a discussion, he was there last night, about certain questions about excise taxes and things that, again, are not germane to the text amendment, but are germane to the eventual discussion of a special permit for this user. Uh, there was, there was some specific questions that came up specifically, um, with regard to excise taxes and where the cars would be registered. If and when this were approved and a special permit were approved, again, we're talking four or five steps down the line. So, briefly, Doug Valeri's the group operations manager, and I do wanna mention this because it was brought up. Um, we did look into the excise tax situation and where the cars are registered, and I don't know if you wanna just, 20-second overview?
Yeah. So, um, in addition to the parking surcharges and other surcharges we pay in the city, we would register 300 vehicles in the city of, um, Revere for excise tax money. So, that could put it upwards of, if they bring new cars, upwards of $400,000 a year in income for the, in revenue.
Could you state your name, please?
My name's Doug Valeri.
Pleased to meet you. Thank you.
V A L E R I. Yeah.
And I only bring that up because it was asked about moving the site and what would happen with these cars, so I just...
We, we understand.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
And, we're gonna let To- Tony Zambuto have the last word, and then we're gonna cut this off. Go ahead, Tony.
So, not to beat a dead horse, uh, one thing the, the council mentioned is a, a car rental that I don't know anything about. It's saying there's a...
Just move the 100 Squire Road.
Well, it's illegal, and if, if it is there, it probably won't be there past tomorrow. I can guarantee you that. Uh, even as a former city councillor, I think I can prevent that from happening. It's, it's not so...
I believe that's just an office for rental.
Huh?
It's just an office for a rental agency. I don't think they store cars.
There's no cars there. There's no, they're not renting cars from that site. 'Cause if they are, it's illegal. Uh, anyhow, I, the, what, what did come up last night was the fact that most of their cars are housed in Chelsea and registered in Chelsea, and, and they ship when they need cars to the site, which is right now at Bell Circle. And, trust me, I've done a lot of business with Enterprise, they're a great rental company. This is not about them. This is about the vision for that, uh, that area. But, what I did say last night was that I've rented three, maybe four dozen cars from Enterprise. I've never had a Massachusetts plate on one of them cars, Tennessee, Georgia. So, I'm skeptical when, not that it, it even impacts your, your decision on how to vote for this, but, uh, I'm skeptical that the cars are gonna be registered in Revere because it'll be different than the practice for many years of shipping cars and mostly out-of-state cars. Anyway, that's not the point. The bottom line is that the only reason I really got up was when I heard there was a rental car place on Squire Road, uh, you know, I wanted to stop that immediately. Anyways, thank you for your time, and, uh, it's good to see you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zambuto. So, um... We're gonna close the public hearing.
We'll go into a regular meeting.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna go to the regular meeting, and we'll be taking this up, so you should, you should stay for the vote, for the discussion and vote, right?
Yes.
Frank?
First order, uh, item on the agenda is approval of previous meeting minutes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the meet, the minutes of the previous meeting. I second it. Motion made in second, without objection, so moved. Next item?
Next item is the annual election of offices for the 2022 calendar year.
I'll entertain, I'll, excuse me, gentlemen? I'll entertain a motion for, uh, nomination for, um, for chairman?
I make a motion, we keep the, uh, the present officers.
Well, let's do them one at a time, okay? So, could you name a nomination for chairman? Who would you like to nominate for chairman?
You can't just make a motion to keep...
The reason why, I know we've done this in the past, but the reason I don't do this is because if somebody wants to vote for one person and not the other, they really are stuck with a motion for all three. So, let's do them one at a time, okay? 'Cause that's official waste.
I make a motion, we have Louis Charloni as the chairperson.
Louis Charloni's been nominated for chairperson. Do I have a second? I second it. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Louis Charloni for, uh, chairman. Any objection? None. Nomination for vice chairman.
I make a motion that, uh, we have Sal Amico for vice chairman.
Sal Amico's been nominated for vice chairman. Do I have a second? Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none. Sal Amico, uh, for, for vice chairman? Without any objection? Hearing none. Nominations for secretary? Have a nomination for secretary?
Make a motion for Juan Giammello.
I have a motion to, for Juan Giammello for secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none. Hearing none, and, uh, hearing none. We'll close the nominations for secretary. Are there any objections to Juan Giammello for secretary? The offices have been voted on and, and accepted.
Third order of business is a vote on a recommendation to the city council regarding a proposed zoning amendment to allow automotive truck rental office and storage by special permit within the highway business district.
We've had the hearing. It's open to discussion. Do, um, does anyone wanna speak to the motion?
Yes, I have a few questions, if we can have that. So, as Council Zambuto had stated that, you know, he's rented from Enterprise, and so I think it's also a service to the residents of Revere, of Revere. We need a rental car service, Chicago's in the shop, you need to pay for a rent. So, the question I have is, if not there, where is rental car services permitted in the city?
I know that Enterprise is, well, why don't we let, why don't we let the, why don't we let the people who represent Enterprise answer that question? Then you can speak after, okay, Tony?
So, I don't, I don't think it's a question to...
Go ahead, Frank. Well, go ahead, Frank. The hearing really is closed, but go ahead.
It's allowed by special permit within the T E D district.
I'm sorry, Frank, what was that?
T E D district.
Okay.
By special permit.
But it's all special permit?
Yeah.
You have to come before us into city council?
I don't know.
No, special permits do not come before us, it's the city council.
The city council, so they'll have to come before the city council, okay.
It's also, uh, P D, P, what is it? It's somehow like renting, some of your...
I know I've rented, I know I've rented down near Bell Circle, right? That's where you guys are.
It's on the S T E D.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments? Did, did you have any? You said you read up on this, did you wanna speak, Ms. Hurley?
I did, but I'm also curious as to this vision for Squire Road.
Well... Did you wanna?
Well, Squire Road is own highway business, that side of Squire Road. So, the allowed uses are mostly retail office, we don't allow residential. So, the vision for that section of the city is restaurants, retail, offices.
At present, yes?
Yes.
Right. I was interested in the, the futuristic outlook. So, it sounds as if there's something that's maybe in the works down the road?
Or...
That, that is something that the, uh, the city will be looking at, will be undertaking a, a, a planning study to, to look at the vacancies on Squire Road and determine, uh, a plan of proposed uses to fill those vacancies. So, that may, may have an outcome of amendments to the zoning ordinance for different uses in the city, for that section of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, Frank, which, there's no, there's no great overlay, there's not some grand,
presently, there's no overlay district planned. I mean, we're in the process of doing a study, uh, that hasn't been initiated yet, but it, it will be in the near future.
And, and the, the other comment I had is the, uh, of the registration of the vehicles in the city. I think that is very important, that if we were to go forward with this, that these vehicles are registered in Revere, that the city is benefiting from the excise tax that would be generated by the registration of these vehicles.
That, that's a great point, but that's really up to the city council to enforce rather than us. That's beyond our parameter. Any, uh, other comments before I speak? I have great respect for Sen- for Senator Zambuto, for, for, uh, former councillor Zambuto, and, um, uh, what, but we, we, we entertained this motion in September. John? We've entertained this motion in, in September, and we recommended it favorably. The planning board does not, I, I don't feel, the planning board only recommends to the city council. We don't, I don't, we don't substitute for their position, they have far more responsibility than us. If they feel that, if they wanna vote our recommendation down for other reasons, like excise tax and stuff, that's certainly their responsibility. The, um, and, an eight-vote special permit certainly get, certainly is a high hurdle to obtain, and would have to be, and, and would have to be a convincing argument by the, by the applicants. So, I'm going to favor this, because I favored it in September, and for the same reasons, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this now. And if for some reason there's something in this proposal that, uh, would, that councillors object to, that's up to them to do. That's up to them, uh, with, who, who are elected with far more responsibility than us. Did anyone else wanna make any other comments before we move to a vote?
I would like to make a comment. As I did in September, I will have to abstain from the vote, as Enterprise is one of my tenants at Logan Airport, so I will not be voting on this matter.
So noted. Anyone else? Anthony? Okay. All right. Wanna go call roll?
Need a motion.
Could you read the mo, could you read the motion?
Well, I haven't received a motion yet.
Well, what, what's the applicant asking for?
Okay, the motion would be to recommend favorably to the city council the adoption of an amendment to allow, um, rental cars, office and storage, uh, within the highway business district by special permit.
Would this, would there, any restrictions? Are the restrictions already be...
It's part of the amendment.
Okay.
Restrictions are part of the amendment.
So, I'll entertain a motion on, um, on, on, I'll entertain a motion on, um... So, I'll entertain a motion on, uh, on, on, I'll entertain a motion on, um, on the favorable recommendation by the board, as read by Frank. I motion, motion by Mr. Del Vecchio. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Who's second?
Do I have a second? The chair will, the chair will, the chair will, uh, second the motion.
Okay. On the motion by Mr. Del Vecchio, seconded by Mr. Charoloni, that the planning board vote favorably to recommend to the city council the adoption of a zoning ordinance amendment to allow by special permit, uh, automotive truck, uh, car rental office and storage in the Highway Business District.
Roll call, Mr. Amico? Mr. Charoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Del Vecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Desimone? Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
Voted and so ordered.
That is the business of the planning board this evening unless...
I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Oh, first, any old business, new business, none. Hearing none. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Amico. We'll have a second. Second by Mr. Del Vecchio. We're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.